Recording in progress.
Thank you for joining us for the Board of Commissioners meeting for 1:00 PM, Monday, August 16, 2021. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all.
So we'll work through our agenda. We'll probably have a few other items today we can talk about, and then also executive sessions. So at this time, item number one, consideration of signature of notice of intent to award contact contract for paving. I was just talking about contact tracing. That's why I was stumbling about there. Okay, thank you. Cody.
Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer at Deschutes County Road Department. So the road department prepared its bid solicitation documents for the paving of Cottonwood Road, US 97 to Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad project. The project includes paving of approximately 1.7 miles of Cottonwood Road in between Highway 97 and the eastern boundary of Sun River, which is at the western approach to the railroad crossing bridge, the bridge that crosses over the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad. The project also includes paving the shoulders at the bridge for the the bridge approach guard rail, removal of approximately four inches of existing dead load. Isn't necessary. End of the road and placement of shoulder aggregate. The department advertised for bids on July 21. We opened bids on August 4. Three bids were received before you this morning, or this afternoon, excuse me, as a notice of intent to award the contract to the apparent low bidder, Ninth River Corporation Northwest, in the amount of $474,000. As always, issuance of the notice of intent to award letter will begin a one-week protest period for interested parties to protest awarded the contract. And if no protest are received during that period, the contract will be awarded administratively. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions? So what's the distance from South Century to the railroad track?
About 1.7 miles.
And then is the right-of-way on the other side of the train track all ODOT at that point?
On the other, on the western side of the railroad is actually Sun River, so it becomes technically a private road within Sun River. East of that, on the Highway 97 side, Cottonwood Road continues to be a county road.
So yeah, east of the railroad track.
East of Highway 97, Cottonwood Road is a county road, yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, I was just referring, isn't there a section between the railroad tracks and 97 still?
There is a section between Highway 97 and the railroad tracks. That's what this project is going to be touching.
I guess, I was thinking, is there a short segment in there somewhere? Am I not even thinking of the right location?
I guess I'm not sure what you're thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, not a problem. So this is for the 1.7 miles. Yeah, I'll have to look at a map.
Yeah, it's about, it's about 1.7 miles in between the railroad, which is to the west, and then Highway 97 to the east there. Everything west of that is in Sun River. Everything east of that is still a county road, but it is not, not in the same condition as this section.
Cody, is this a project that we're going to be able to do this fall?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Dare, I couldn't hear you.
I know, it's terrible. I'm wearing a KN 99, or 95. Anyway, is this a project that we are going to be able to do this fall?
Yes.
Okay, good. Is it a short term, is it just a couple of weeks or something?
Yeah, this, this should only be two days really of mainline paving. There'll be, there'll be a couple other days on there for the shoulder widening and about another day for the delineation. But yeah, this, this project should, should only take a couple weeks max. And we anticipate in this work sometime in mid-September. The paving on our Rickard Road project.
Thank you.
It looks like we do have audio coming and going a little bit, just short little drops here, just letting you know. So I was envisioning the, the Van Devert setup where there's that short section to the highway. So I was asking the wrong question about when I did. So I, I see what I was asking.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Sure. I move approval of Board Chair signature of a document number 2021-542, a notice of intent to award for the paving of Cottonwood Road.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, calling for the vote, Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Then the backside.
Item number two, consideration of board signature naming the community service shop to recognize and honor Jim Smith. There we go.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for joining us.
I'm Sonya Little Dear-Evans, interim director for community justice. And with me is Sam Bachman, who is a community justice supervisor who oversees our community service program. And we get the honor of doing something kind of fun and near and dear to our hearts, but we are here today to seek approval from the Board of County Commissioners for a resolution to name the new community service shop in honor and after Jim Smith. For those of you who may not know, Jim Smith worked for the county and our department for a little over 30 years, where he was a probation officer, and then ultimately he became the supervisor of our community service program. And during that time, Jim Smith has, is known, and has been known throughout his career, for somebody that really embodied the understanding of what community service is all about. A restorative practice, huge proponent of connecting to community and building relationships, making sure that our projects were something that not only benefited those who were harmed and those who had done the harming, but also benefited the community at large, making deep, deep partnerships. Some of the projects that he did early on in his career were the skate park that was built in Redmond. He actually spearheaded that, donated some of his own time to working on that, raised all the funds. He also is who we credit for the robust graffiti removal program that we have. He really made that what it is. And he, you know, he really just embodied what community justice in Deschutes County stands for. And I will stop there. I could go on and on, but I'll pause there and let, let Sam add to that.
All right, thank you very much. Jim Smith has, has added to the community service by creating relationships that have helped embody the entire community with our community service programs, such as forest service work, where we're, we have in the past helped restore access to trails to the rivers and also river banks to reestablish grasses to make sure that erosion doesn't occur, so that our entire community can continue to use, you know, the river services and, and trail services that we have. He's also created a relationship with Central Oregon Council of Aging, which we help with seniors who are unable or who are unable to afford yard services, so we can help clean up fire fuels reductions so that, you know, wildfires don't take a hold of our community as it's, you know, threatened every year. So Jim has not only created a community service to help our youth repay, but it's, it helps our entire community in ways that I don't think the community even realizes. And, and because of Jim Smith and his relationship building, it is going to continue to go on into the future. And it is well deserved that, that this building and shop be named after Mr. Smith.
Great, thank you very much for the introductory statements there. I'm happy to support this. Jim Smith is, it's a, it's a positive name in our community, and it has touched, you know, him and the efforts of this, this outreach program have really touched a lot of folks. One of the things I think of is, you know, seeing the progress. Here, here's a project, folks, you know, that referring to the, the young folks that may be there on the project. This is the beginning, and then when you see it done, that's a sense of accomplishment. And it really, it helps everybody being able to do that and understanding that, you know, maybe correlative to start, but hopefully by the time we're done, we know there's an accomplishment being done and puts things in perspective a little bit. So that's the big picture here. And this is a shop building, it's, but it's going to be, you know, a point of pride to be able to name it after the great efforts and the long tenure of the service for the people of Deschutes County.
I really appreciate hearing about the important community service work that, that Jim Smith has done in the last few weeks, and then from you here today. I'm, I'm curious are, whether there's going to be like a plaque or something, you know, something to capture some of the information and, and, you know, history that you shared with us and the examples that you shared with us today, you know, on outside of the building or like online somewhere, just so that, you know, information like that is, you know, we retain it and, and, you know, five years or 10 years from now, people, people aren't asking like, well, you know, this, this building has a name, like, what does it mean? It'd be really, it seems, you know, like, I just think it would be really valuable to kind of, kind of, you know, capture and commemorate that information somewhere.
Yes, and thank you for that question, Commissioner Chang. There is a plan to actually do a dedication of the building in an open house. You know, it is brand new, it's nearing completion. And we have a plan for a community service crew to actually help create the sign. And when Tom asked me to write some information of it, turned into a research project, because I haven't been here for 30 years, but I've known Jim Smith for a long time, and I could not believe the stories and the examples of things that we do today that got its start from, from Mr. Smith. So we do plan on commemorating that in, in some form, but the sign will actually be kind of cool to have work crews actually help craft that.
Great. Good to hear. Wonderful.
And I don't know what I could say on top of Commissioner DeBonne and Commissioner Chang's comments, but I always so appreciate and I'm so thankful for people in our community that step up and especially 30 years plus, and the amazing projects that he did, and the difference he made and the inspiration he gave. So I'm so glad that we're going to be able to honor him, and I surely hope that we can attend that dedication ceremony.
Yes.
How soon will the building, will, will the ceremony be? Have you scheduled a date yet?
We have not. We just got an update this morning. It looks like the steel that they've been waiting for, for the outside is going to be here, always on here, a couple weeks. So probably early, middle of September is when it's going to be done. And then we're going to have the team move in and actually set it up. So when we do the, the kind of, you know, grand opening, folks can actually tour it. We'd love for the community to come and see it. And so we don't have a date yet, but I have to make sure Jim is not fishing or in Hawaii, so he can be there.
It would be nice if he was here attending.
The life of a retiree, huh?
Yes, sounds like fun. How about a trip to Alaska, right?
And he helped design this building, so it'll be really cool for him to see it and see it open as well.
Be nice to have that dedicated space also. So this is going to be done by order also, and there's some wonderful wherethas explaining the, the history and acknowledging the efforts over the years. And we don't do this very often, you know, naming a building here in Deschutes County, it just hasn't happened too many times over the years. And there's definitely been some naming that has happened, but it's an exciting day to be able to honor all the years of service to the community.
Okay, we have, I know. I would like to move that we make them pass the order number 2021-036, naming the community service shop to recognize and honor Jim Smith.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And chair votes yes. Thank you for joining us. A real positive thing to be able to do today.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. At this time, item number three, performance and measure updates for the fourth quarter.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner DeBonne. We are here for Q4 Performance Measure Updates today. And as you saw in the materials that were provided in your packet, all departments have completed their Q4 performance measures. Today, we're going to hear from a few select departments about their updates. And we're going to kick things off with admin. David Givens is going to provide an update, and I think David told me he's either never provided a performance measure update, or it's been a really long time. So we need to make sure that we have this moment and hear from David. He's going to talk to you a little bit about the survey responses that tie to his audit report. So I'll go ahead and let David give that update.
Thanks, Whitney, and thanks, commissioners. Dave Givens, county internal auditor. And so performance measures for an internal audit shop are varied. And the one I selected for the county was my overall survey response. And that is one I've kind of pretty much used since I started here. And the surveys change a little bit over time, but it is a good measure of really performance of the reports in terms of reaching their audience and how the users, the readers of the report feel about what the, the audit was. And so the, the survey actually is, is, is handled through an online service, Survey Monkey. And there's a number of links in a number of different areas. So over the years, I've struggled with trying to get good responses from everybody who reads the reports. And it's pretty difficult to get consistent responses on those, but I've been adding links to the distribution of the report. I've been adding links to the report itself. So in the PDF, you can just click on a button and it takes you to the survey. So I would encourage any of the readers, whether they be management or the department or yourself as commissioners, to fill, fill, fill out that survey. My survey results show a really pretty strong response, around 93% the last quarter. I'd say over the year and over years, it's been in that range or a little bit lower, just kind of in that, you know, 90, 93% area. I strive for a 95% rate. My professional association, when they surveyed their audit shops across the country, they would average around 82%. So my goal is a little bit higher than my peers are seeing. And so again, that's, that's internal audit. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Well, I want, as I say, I've been involved with the Audit Committee for many years, and it's, it's valuable to think about the, you know, be able to read the points of the audit, but then doing a survey is taking a half a step back and saying, is this product answering the question we wanted to? And then is the product digestible? You know, so I mean, there's just, it's a nice, a different aspect of, of the audit report itself to be able to look at it like this. So thank you very much.
Hey. 93% may not be the 95% you want, but it sounds pretty good to me.
Yep. I'm pretty happy with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to the people that do serve on the Audit Committee, too. It's a very dedicated and incredibly competent group, so I thank them.
Right.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to hear from Steve Dennison, the Clerk's Office. This is a performance measure that compares election staff FTE to voter registration, and this ties to the Board's goal of service delivery and the objective of ensuring quality service through the use of innovative technology and systems.
Whitney, I'm not sure if he's.
Yeah, so he's not in the room with us.
We're running a little early, so maybe we could come back.
I was wondering.
Okay.
Blind here. I can see the Board really well, but.
Oh, the rest of the room. We do have community development available for, for the next item, though, so.
Perfect. Let's go ahead and hear from Peter Russell next. Peter's going to be providing an update on the Redmond UGB, and this ties to the Board's goal of economic vitality and the objective of administering land use policies that promote livability.
Good afternoon, Board. Peter Russell, senior transportation planner. City of Redmond, through Operation of the Board, the Board donated 40 acres of vacant land near the Negas Transfer Station for this affordable housing project. City of Redmond applied to the county and filed 247-20000-440PA, and the Board approved that. It's going to be 485 affordable housing units in Redmond. What the city will be doing in the next 45 days is looking towards annexing that land and also putting out a request for qualifications and request for proposal to hire a master developer to then develop the property, which the Board approved the, the zone change, to go from agricultural to, really, I can talk, rural residential. And that was done on June 16. He did it by emergency, so it took effect immediately. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Well, this is kind of celebrating the consummation here, you know, that the reports, the, the, the steps that got us here, but it really does connect up from the, the annual goals and objectives of Deschutes County, opportunity provided by the state legislature for this UGB expansion for this purpose. And now we've even executed on it. So that's another real positive step at this time. Does take a while to get through this process, even when the state legislature says go, which is amazing.
Well, I'm used to saying rural residential is actually urban reserve is what you're mentioning, too.
Yeah. Okay.
I know. And do we not desperately need those 485 apartments, cottages, townhomes? Like, we need them tomorrow, or we needed them yesterday, when I'm hearing what some of the rent now is being paid in the, in the county. It's, our workforce housing is so desperate for more housing. And I'm hoping that, what was this project going to take? A couple years? And I'm just thinking, we need the housing as soon as possible. So thank you, Peter. Thank you for what your department did. And hopefully, the rest of the, the building will really be the fast part, right?
Once the city selects a master developer, and also they've got to go through, you know, HOAs and CCRs and things like that, but we're much closer than we were earlier.
Okay, good news.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Next up, Tanya Saltzman's going to talk to you about the housing strategy, the development of a county housing strategy. This ties to the Board's goal of economic vitality and the objective of supporting affordable housing options through the availability of lands, project planning, and appropriate regulations.
Thanks, Whitney. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, senior long-range planner. Yes, continuing on this very important topic of housing, the Board has continually expressed its desire to explore the opportunities and the challenges surrounding housing in the rural county. As we know, population has been growing. The census data has just come out. Deschutes County is one of the highest, highest rates of growth in the, between 2010 and 2020. So there's, there's a lot to be done. So last summer and fall, planning staff conducted a vacant residential lands analysis and paired it with a rural housing strategies report. That's available on our CDD website. If you have not seen it, I also have one hard copy with me. So the vacant residential lands analysis, this was a first blush kind of effort at identifying approximately, well, in this case, it identified about 5,888 vacant lots in the rural county where residential uses were permitted outright. And I'll just break that down very briefly. 882 of those were in resort areas, so destination resorts, resort communities, and our urban unincorporated community, Sun River. 3,400 approximately were located in rural residential zoned areas. And then lastly, there were about 1,500 that were, we kind of put it in a potential future category. They weren't yet platted, but we anticipated them coming online. Probably since we did the report, some of those have become real, real properties that are actually vacant or to be developed. So that leaves, so that's approximately 5,800 vacant residential lands at this moment. So you could, in theory, produce housing on those. Obviously, there's, there's site conditions and things that might limit some of those, but that's a general, general analysis that we did. And we incorporated that data into a larger housing strategies report. That summarized kind of the methodology behind that, the analysis. We also did a 12-month market analysis in terms of housing prices, which also has probably changed since we've done the report. We looked at demographics and population projections. And staff identified potential strategies and legislative challenges that, you know, for the Board. For instance, one of those things were, was outreach to the properties that are eligible for historic accessory dwelling units, which is a project we did a couple years ago. So we had a, we sent out letters, and I believe there's been another round of letters possibly sent out, just to let people know that they might be eligible for this program. So that report identified tasks like that, little ones like that, seemingly small, but significant to any, any dwelling that will create. It also identified potential zoning tax amendments that could occur that might also chip it away, chip away at this potential housing need. And it also identified sort of the challenges existing just in the way the Oregon land use system is currently set up. Certain things that the Board at the moment does not necessarily have control over, but could potentially lobby to change, change law that would affect this. And one of those things was rural ADUs. We are, we've been discussing this with the Board, staff has been discussing this. This was identified in the housing strategies process as kind of number one item to follow, lobby for, et cetera. And that legislation was actually passed in June of this year. And staff in the planning department, we've been working with the Board, and we will continue to do so on implementation strategies for Senate Bill 391, which allows rural ADUs. Staff will be coming back to the Board, I think, on September 1st to discuss the next wave of kind of things that, that we can address, things that are in the longer range, just how to, it's a big, there's a lot of components of it. So we're kind of parsing it out and figuring out the best way to approach it so that we will be ready. will be ready to implement this ASAP. And all of this will ultimately inform our comprehensive plan update, which we anticipate, I believe, will kick off either later this year or slightly after that. And that's going to take, you know, all aspects of housing and wildlife and wildfire, all the things that we do in planning, and look at them together and kind of assess where the county can go from there. And that's, that's my general update on housing. It's a big topic, but we're trying to get at it from many angles, and we appreciate the Board's support.
Well, 12 to 18 months, we'll be doing a lot of work here.
Yes, we will.
Not like you've been doing lots of work already.
Just, yeah.
So with the census study information out, is there somebody in community development going to start to run through that, provide a report at some point?
We were just speaking about that this morning. I think, we're looking for the data. I think the Census Department has released a little bit of that, but not all of it. I think it's going to trickle out. So the second we can get our hands on it, we anticipate looking at it and looking at that data and coming back to the Board and doing a kind of demographics analysis, analysis of what's been going on.
Yeah. Because that'll be an interesting point when you can kind of lay out Deschutes County and the numbers as published.
Exactly. And that'll be part of the comprehensive plan, but we want to come back to you before that, certainly.
Yeah.
It was very interesting. I gave testimony on redistricting several months ago. And I was told that our CD2 was probably quite a bit bigger, perhaps 80,000 bigger than it should be. And someone from the state that day said that we were like, short 8,000. I mean, I know I wrote down what the man said. And I'm like thinking, so I just heard we're like over 100,000, you know? And that's surely got to be, do a lot to Deschutes County. So it's going to, it's going to be a huge job. And it's just further indication of how we need more housing. Workforce housing, yeah. There isn't anyone you can talk to in the county that isn't either working 12 hours a week or, I mean, a day. I mean, the people and sisters at the market are working 12-hour shifts now. And you can see it. And I feel so badly for them. So, anyway, thank you for all you do. And let's hope that we can get the 391 in 12 months instead of 18, right?
We will do our best.
I know, I know. Well, betting on the state. Let's see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, the county clerk is in the room at this point in time. So we were about 10 minutes early, so we were just about to call you, and then we're like, oh, he's not here yet.
Perfect. So let's go ahead and pivot back to the Clerk's Office. And as I mentioned before, this is a performance measure update that compares election staff FTE to voter registration. And I'll turn this over to Steve.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Whitney. Sorry I'm late.
Oh, no. I think you walked in right at 1:25. It's when we had it published for, we were just a little ahead.
Great. Well, thanks for, thanks for having me here today to talk about our performance measure. We compare our full-time employees, FTEs, to registered voters. And it really helps highlight the productivity that we have here in our office. As you can see on the chart, we're comparing with Clackamas, Jackson, Lane, and Marion Counties. We're really close population-wise or registered voters-wise to Jackson County. But compared with each one, we do, we do more with less full-time employees. And that's been a long time running productivity. And it's attributable by, because of the seasoned staff, veterans, you know, Nancy, Melody, Barb, other people that really know how to run elections and do it while taking advantage of utilizing technology. And this returning extra help staff that we have coming in is really the secret to, another secret to our success. But again, it's just really highlights that we do a lot with a little, little bit of staff. And right now, actually, our chart is outdated as we are just down to one FTE. So, but we're working on hiring there and then to get back up to two. And probably with another retirement coming up next year, where we're going to be losing a long time employee, we'll be looking to probably, possibly add a little bit more staff and support to keep this. It's, for continuity purposes, we are lean, but that really sets us up for some risk if, you know, anything unforeseen happened. We don't have much of a contingency with our staff, so. Any questions about, about this? It's a small stat, but I think it speaks a lot, it tells a, tells a pretty big tale of what Nancy's set up and been able to do here in her tenure.
Great, thank you. I think it's all about managing growth in Deschutes County. So the number of registered voters is growing. In fact, it jumps up enthusiastically once in a while. So, yeah, just scaling the whole office, though, in the next, you know, three to five years, scaling the office itself with maybe the next FTE, but having the location for the staff also. So that'll be the big picture over the next few years for you there. Yeah, thank you.
And, yeah, and I think you're probably aware of that glaring statistic, but over the last five years, our registered voter roll has increased 50%. So it's, it's large. We're, you know, the pool of voters that we're maintaining every day is just ever-growing. And, but our staff, our staff has not, so.
So Steve, could I understand this a little better? So like, looking at this chart, it says Lane County had 36,039 registered voters per FTE? And you're saying that we're doing that job with, we're doing twice the job?
Yeah.
For one person, correct?
Correct. So, yeah, Lane County has, they've increased their, their staff. They have seven, seven and a half FTE. So just divide that with their registered voters, and that's, that's how we come up with that. Marion's kind of been the, had been the one with the, quite a large crew, five people. But, anyway, yeah, Lane is now increased to 7.5. So we are almost twice what they, what they do.
Thank you.
I mean, at first look at these numbers, it's, you know, I was really impressed with the productivity and efficiency. And our Clerk's Office is that. But then, you know, what you mentioned, Steve, about kind of the, the lack of redundancy or backup, if something happens, that, that does, that concerns me. So it's good to understand these numbers with, with that kind of concern in the background or, you know, issue that we need to be aware of as we look at this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
And next, we're going to hear from Janice Garso with Health Services. We have performance measure updates today on two performance measures that tie to the Board's goal of healthy people. And these are the two measures that tie into the behavioral health-related objective. And so today, Janice is going to give you an update on both of those measures.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Janice Garso, Director of Behavioral Health. Thank you for letting me participate remotely. I am about 24-plus hours from vacation and in the midst of prepping, so just back-to-back.
Look at that smile on your face there. Oh, my God.
Well, I'm still hoping I won't breathe easy till I actually get in the car and get out of town, but we're working on it. So, I am here to talk with you about two of our behavioral health performance measures that really relate to access to services. One is related to access to services for people basically who are in crisis. Our emergent or urgent population is the terminology and the metric, but those are people who are experiencing a psychiatric emergency and were required by contract and frankly by desire to see those people as quickly as possible. We have a goal of doing that 100% of the time, so pretty high threshold for achievement. And we have been within a percentage point or less of that goal throughout the course of this year. That has, is very much reflective of the work of our crisis team, our mobile crisis assessment team, MCAT, and our crisis stabilization center team. They really are the people who make it possible for us to meet that timeline. The second goal relates to access as well, and that's referred to as routine care. So these are folks who are seeking behavioral health or substance use disorder services through us that are not necessarily in a psychiatric emergency, but certainly wanting to get in as soon as possible. We used to have a goal of 14 days. That was reduced to within seven days in this last contract period. And we have mostly, again, met that goal. Again, it's 100%. We are within a couple of percentage points of that goal. And when we've missed the mark, it has been in part due to staff shortages. At times, we have been down-staffed in a number of ways over the course of the last year and a half. And then also related to certain client coverage types like Medicare that require an individual to be assigned to a certain type of license, a clinician with a certain type of license. That can sometimes make it skew our numbers because it takes a little bit longer to get those folks assigned.
Great. Well, thank you for keeping track of that. And interesting to hear that, you know, some of the metrics do change over the years, so the seven days opposed to 14, but really able to keep up with that capacity need. Looks like no other questions. Thank you.
Happy vacation, Janice.
Thanks to all the staff for doing such an excellent job of keeping up with that workload.
Yeah. I will pass that along, Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have County Council Dave Doyle, who is going to be providing an update on one of Legal's performance measures that relates to, the measure actually relates to remote work site processes, but the update Dave is going to provide today has to do with the hosting of the county's code. I will turn things over to Dave.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioners, you may recall, we switched our county code platform from one that was internal and hosted and operated, maintained by IT to one with a national platform, MuniCode, which is also the platform that our agenda stuff is, our program is now a part of. We did that primarily because it provided a number of opportunities. It's a much cleaner format, easier to operate, navigate through. Updates can be put onboard much quicker. We can get updates within a day or two of the Board adopting a new ordinance, adopting new text. We could have it uploaded and available. And the primary reason is a tool called Active Links, which we didn't have the ability to when we were hosted internally. And as you are well aware, every piece of county code is brought to being through a county ordinance that adopts section such and such of the Deschutes County Code or revises an existing section. Well, that enacting ordinance, in the past, you couldn't link the two together. It was very arduous, very difficult even internally for staff to be able to find the ordinance, let's say in 1991, that adopted Section 123 that you're concerned about. And so now we have that ability with this Active Links, that all the code sections are linked to the enacting ordinances. And you can literally just double-click and it pulls up a PDF of the enacting ordinance, which oftentimes will have some legislative history that might shed some light on why a change was made or why a particular provision was adopted. So that really helps, helps us internally when we're having to do code research, but it really helps the public as well. Because we did have, albeit very challenging, the ability to find those enacting ordinances. I just don't know how the public would have ever found those. That was very, very challenging. And so now it's a double-click and there it is. So that's really beneficial. There's a cost benefit to this, as we put it. It, you know, we're looking at somewhere between, in a light year, probably $1,500 to $3,000 a year to continue with this particular program. And that's a product of how many updates to code we do on an annual basis. But that's probably two or threefold the savings that it's provided to IT, because they had to dedicate one of their staff people, not exclusively, but they had to dedicate a staff person that spent a decent chunk of her time managing the county code, making sure it didn't fall offline for whatever reasons. And that person's freed up to do other, other work for IT. So it really was long overdue and thank the Commissioners for allowing us to do that. You'll recall, we had that big stack of code updates that we wanted to do so that we wouldn't be paying extra money to do little housekeeping-type code amendments.
One point in time, yeah.
Yeah. And so what we gave them when we switched over a couple of months ago is a very clean current code. There'll be a few changes and revisions. Various departments have a few that they're, they're working on with Legal, but we really wanted to make sure that we wouldn't, within the first year or two after switching over, have a whole bunch of housekeeping amendments and have the Board going, wait a minute, why didn't we do this before we switched over? And save some money. And so we did do that. So, thank you very much.
Great.
But that's the update.
You.
And I will say, I've heard from a few people external to the county, some attorneys in town that use our code from time to time, they're very grateful and fond it to be much more user-friendly.
Great to make all that so much more accessible to people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I heard some really excellent things about Deschutes County and transparency the other day from someone who has been working with us. Particularly, I want to acknowledge Chris Doty. He was part of the information out there. And I think that's really important when you're dealing with government and transparency. So, thank you, Dave, for making this, your leadership in your department.
That concludes the Q4 Performance Measure Updates, unless the Board has any specific questions. Happy to try to...
I just want to acknowledge, thank you very much for putting the whole performance measure packet together. This is Q4, the complete year. This is where, you know, the objectives and the measures were all put together, and now this is the fourth time we're updating them throughout the year. The spreadsheet provided really shows a lot of great information here. The turnaround times at community development and some of the development applications kind of going up over time, it's, we're tracking it quarterly and responding to it. So it's just valuable to have this information and understanding, you know, what we think we're going to do and then measuring it.
And this will be the final quarter that you have the spreadsheet in front of you. When we come back to for Q1, we're going to be using our new performance measure dashboard, so that'll be something exciting to look forward to. But we're, we're looking forward to getting that rolled out.
And Whitney, can I, can I ask you to recap for me again just what the process is to set, you know, kind of, to set these performance measures? Like, who's involved and when do it, when do they do it and when do they review these?
Yeah, this is part of our annual budget process. So when departments are formulating their budget for the coming fiscal year, they analyze the goals and objectives that the Board has identified and put together for the coming fiscal year. And then they develop their performance measures and they submit them along with their proposed budget. And the team that reviews the proposed budget also reviews performance measures. And if, when needed, we work with the department on those measures. And sometimes my lens is more of a lens of how would a community member that's not familiar with the service better understand the work the county does and kind of looking at it through that lens? And then performance measures are published in the budget document, and we report on them throughout the year. So we report on them quarterly. Departments provide updates on how they're doing and achieving those measures. And each quarter, we select different departments so that we ensure that throughout the year the Board hears from all departments, but that you also receive updates on all goals and all objectives that you've set as your, kind of your vision for the county for the year, so that you're getting a broad view of how we're doing and meeting those goals.
Great, thank you.
So if there's any measurement or objective from a department that you question, or, you know, just the wording, or should we track something else? There's, there's an open communication for that. I mean, we could feed back to anybody just to say, is this the right measure or is there something else? You know, just if anything jumps out at you.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, reviewing this, you know, now I've seen these performance measures a couple of times in this spreadsheet, but each time I learned something new. And, I mean, they, they seem like very good metrics to be tracking as far as I can tell. So, just wanted to understand a little bit more about where, you know, when we set them and how we, how we set them and when we review them and things like that. So, thank you.
Commissioners, do I just, just add one word to that? It actually starts even earlier than that with you all. During your retreat in January, you, you set our goals and objectives for the organization, and that's what departments use, are those objectives to then develop their own performance measures, which are designed to implement... measures, which are designed to implement those objectives within their organization. So we ensure that each of them are covered within the range of measurements that you see from all the departments.
Thank you.
And I just want to point out that I was noticing three to four and four to five are the busiest times to call 911 on our sheet. And they didn't post it for the last quarter, but I do think that's significant for our community to be aware of. I actually called the backup number on Friday. Someone passed a car going up the hill from Tumalo. Another car was coming from the west and they actually pulled out in the dirt. So there wasn't like a three car collision. It was unbelievable. And 911 asked me if I got the license plate number and I'm like, oh my gosh, I barely, I mean, it was like a small car. There were two of them and they were going, oh my God, crazy fast on their way somewhere. And yeah. And fortunately, the people driving from the other direction were paying attention and they got off the road. So it was just like, and you think, thank goodness you can call that backup number. You should have that number in your phone and call it. And Whitney, what is it? Do you remember the backup 911 number? I just think if we could post that for people, it's.
Was it between three o'clock and five o'clock?
Yes, it was. It was like 10 minutes to five and yes. So I did call the backup number, but knowing that that's their busiest time.
693-6911.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner DeBog. Anyway, yeah.
I used to call about the cans being stolen at the Park District about 12 years ago.
Oh, really?
Like we'd come in and, I mean, somebody tore a wall down one time and I figured, well, it's not quite an emergency, but I should call somebody. So that's when I put that phone number in my phone.
Well, I don't know. This one's, anyway, thank you, Whitney.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next. Yeah, Earthwin, if you have, if Laura wants to kick us off on these, two items.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Laura Skundrick, Administrative Analyst. At your July 21st Board Meeting, you reviewed first quarter discretionary grant applications and you had expressed an interest in learning more information about one of the applicants, an organization called Earthwin. So today, Earthwin's founder and president is here. This is Brandon and he is here to share more information. So I'll hand it over to him.
Well, Brandon, thank you very much for joining us. This is full on just introduction. Tell us what, yeah, and I don't have the Earthwin paperwork from last time. We did review it at one point, but yeah, please, introduction.
Can I take this off or, I don't know, I can't see without my glasses and they fog up with it, so I bet I don't feel.
I mean, I came to the conclusion that once you're settled into your location, that you can probably take your mask off and then, you know, as you're going back and forth around the building to have it on.
Is that okay?
Be more than six.
I don't know, you'd have to call Legal Counsel of the Governor if you want clarity. But no, please do. Yeah.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you.
Earthwin, we started in 2014. We built a business plan in Costa Rica and were chosen first place in the United Nations Business Planning Competition to create renewable energy. And it was, we were hired as an independent company and it was designed to help the country become 100% energy independent. So we started there and then I came home, built a nonprofit entity and we went to Colombia and built a tree farm to help elevate women out of poverty and to offset Western consumers' carbon footprints. And then, so that's still happening. And then the COVID happened and so we just shifted our energies to volunteer for the holiday farm fire and, you know, relief that, that happened down there. I gathered 15 individuals, including some people from St. Charles, from the Giant, the CEO from Giant Bicycles, the Preston Calacot from Effigen. We got the founder of Home, Gary, a whole bunch of people, really smart people in a room. And we did a three-day design think charrette on how to most impact society in our community and the planet. And the birth was this developing eco-clubs with middle schoolers. The reason is because grade schoolers, they're still formulating thoughts and ideas and how to be critical thinkers. High schools are formulating hormones and they're a little, you know, they're distracted a little bit more. But middle schoolers are very passionate about the environment and there's citation and citation, citation about the positive effects of getting them involved in community owned projects and hands-on learning. And capturing them at that age is very important for their development and turning them into leaders, teaching them how to build budgets, how to build teams, how to do projects. And so with marketing, which is the greatest reach into our society, print doesn't work hardly anymore. There's no newspaper, there's no magazines anymore. TV is dying on the vine because we can pay for our entertainment on Netflix. Radio is hanging on by a thread. And so that kind of leaves social media. The metrics in social media are such that two years ago, Facebook stock went through the roof when the cost per thousands and reach hit $3.50. A year ago, it hit $7, now it's $11. Organic reach in social media, and I know this is a little off topic, but bear with me. Organic reach in social media is less than 4%. So all of these companies spend, obviously billions of dollars, but a huge portion of their budget to reach people, to communicate. But you only reach 4% organically. So you still have to pay to get in front of people. And so we created something that's going to have reach and it's going to reach into the schools, it's going to reach into the faculty, it's going to reach into our community leadership through sponsorship. But then recording the students as they're coming up with their ideas, building their projects, their successes, their failures, is going to create an inspiration. Our idea is to build a path forward for community-owned, community-developing projects that are going to raise awareness for and responsibility building for the basic idea that everything we do matters. Everything that we buy, everything we throw away, everything we consume, every kindness, every effort matters to the whole. And that sense of responsibility is really a dire need right now with, well, I can't, I can list it, you guys are obviously, you hear about all this. And having something that's positive, inspiring in our community, you know, I go up to the lakes, I was born and raised here, and there's micro trash everywhere. You can't find a place to park. Our, our trails are overcrowded. We're having society problems in Little Bend, Oregon. They're having greater problems in all of the cities. That's why they're coming to Little Bend, Oregon. We need to educate our population about the environment, about sustainability, about responsibility, contribution, giving back. And we believe that this is the most effective way to do it because of the shareability and the stickiness and reach, in reaching our greater community.
So back to the beginning, so Earthwin, right? That's what we're talking about?
Yes.
And the request was for?
$2,500.
And the purpose was?
The purpose is to pay for the backend CRM mechanism that's going to function this. We're using grant money as well and donation dollars, you know, from large, larger employers here in central Oregon to fund the projects. And, you know, we need, and that's what most businesses want to do is fund the projects. And so I need more support on the backend for managing it. Again, just to refresh your memory of what Earthwin is, I thought I'd give you a little bit that wasn't on the document, which I'm going to hand you. We're asking middle school kids to answer three questions based on the fact that all of our actions could be defined as Earthwin or Earthlose, depending on how kind you are to the environment, your community and each other. And why is this important and why should we care? What are you going to do to make a difference in your community, in your school and for the planet? The winner will, we will fund an Earthwin Eco Club in their school and we're working in conjunction with their schools. And then we're going to have them do a budget and then we're going to have, fund their project that they want to do. It could be build a buddy bench, make a community garden, clean up a lake or a riverbed or plant trees or, you know, enhance a park. There's whatever that, you know, their kids, whatever they want to do. The idea is to, more is to run this program over and over and over until we have eco-clubs in all of our middle schools and do something positive through the schools. I know the schools are taking a lot of heat right now. And it's funded outside of school district dollars.
Great. Any questions or?
I guess my big questions are about the degree to which you're already integrated with our, our school, our local schools and with all the organizations that work with them. The, the emphasis on middle schoolers, I think is great. The, the conservation focus and the desire to raise awareness and the kind of messaging you're, you're talking about, I think are all great. You know, kind of giving, you know, providing skill-building opportunities for young people also great. I think a lot of that is already happening in our schools. So that's, you know, there are, there are, many of our middle schools already have environmental clubs. There are local organizations in our community that are, that are kind of supporting and assisting that work. So I, I guess I want to understand kind of whether you're already integrated into that network of, of people doing that work and if so, how you, you know, kind of, I could see the, you know, I could, I could see the kind of technical assistance with, you know, doing, you know, of, you know, essentially social marketing through, through videos, how that could be really, a really helpful thing to add. But, you know, like I want, I'd like to, you know, I want to understand how that is, how you are actually adding that to efforts as opposed to trying to reinvent the wheel. Because again, there are, there are clubs like what you were describing, I think, at many of our middle schools already. So it's kind of like, how do you, how do you integrate with what's already happening to add value as opposed to kind of trying to bring them something that, that, you know, that, that is not as organic for them?
Yeah, I under, good question. I understand that you are wanting me to address where, how I'm not reinventing the wheel and working with already existing programs or organizations and adding value. That's exactly what we're doing. I'm working with the Environmental Center with Mike Riley. They've done a couple of these before, one-off projects where it wasn't actually building an eco club, but having an eco club project. But then they pull out and there's no continuation. There are a few eco-clubs or environmental clubs in a few of our middle schools. And I'm using actually the curriculum from, or not, I wouldn't say curriculum, the programming from the Bend International School. And they are running into the, the problem of funding it or finding projects for the kids to do and then being able to fund the project and then they got to go out to their parents. What we're using is sponsorship dollars that creates an impact for the sponsors, first of all, and creates something that's sustainable long-term in each one. And we're going to run this in each, obviously build a pathway in the first one and then do it again and do it again and do it again, so that there's a continuation of the process. The, I'm working with Oregon State University. I've, I've been using interns very successfully. They each need projects, but also getting them to aid in, you know, through their, their Sustainability Department is their largest fastest growing department. And they're desperate for projects for the kids to work on there. And so this creates a really nice marriage with Oregon State to use university students to aid and help with the kids. And it's so fun and inspiring. Did I answer your question?
Yeah. No, that's, those, those are great examples of connections and partnerships. And I, I guess when, at the point where we were, we're looking at this proposal again, I'd encourage you to include some of that in the, in the narrative. I know it's a short.
I have done a lot of work since I submitted it.
Okay.
Unfortunately, but unfortunately for you, what you received was pretty limited based on my limited, we didn't have a website then, we didn't have these partnerships built. So I've done a lot of work since you first saw it. So thank you for considering again and taking a look again. And I'm happy to provide anything more and answer any questions you have. I think it would be a really good partnership, especially with Deschutes County. Our goal is to make a path forward that's duplicatable across all of Oregon counties. And Deschutes County, even though it's a small nominal amount of money, it's a really big impact for us in the form of partnership. So that's really what I'm hoping for.
So one of the concepts I think of is this, these investments are either economic development or economic stability or emergency food, clothing and shelter. You know, I'm just trying to think about the, the kind of categories we think of when we invest these dollars. So with those statements, yeah, what is an eco club going to do relative? I mean, is it, is it environmental specifically or?
A, it's mostly community building and, you know, EDI, equity, diversity and inclusion and because kids don't see color and pulling families and kids together around a common cause, which is strong community building. It's awareness building as well as, one of the things, working with St. Charles, they've been really, really helpful on this from the beginning. There's a, the Oregon Health, what's the organization? The Oregon Health.
Council.
Council, thank you. The Oregon Health Council. They're looking strongly at making the, one of their top initiatives for their new focus is how climate change, environmental awareness, sustainability really impacts overall health. Because when you address the fact that we are of nature and we're from nature and care for nature, it raises the awareness of taking care of yourself at a higher level. And they feel that it's as good as a health insurance policy. If you take care of people's inner environment and outer environment of our planet, it's very, very important in the long run.
Thank you.
No, thank you for taking the time today. I think it is important to hear and I do like the idea that kindness could be critical and the fact that our whole world needs more kindness is so important. When you know that, what, 3,700 incidents have been reported to the FAA this year alone for people that are on planes. I mean, it's unbelievable what is happening and.
Just got goosebumps.
Well, we definitely need more kindness.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my message of today. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Let's be kinder.
Hey.
That's what we're going for.
Here we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great, well, thank you.
It's December 1st?
And nice meeting you and thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.
And one more presentation today.
That's right. So here we have the Owls, a Warrior Society. They were another first quarter discretionary grant applicant that the Board had expressed interest in learning more information about. So today, the Owls founder, Eric Marley, will be joining us via Zoom, I believe.
So Eric Marley. So Eric Marley from the. So we're not seeing Eric Marley on the Zoom?
No, he's, he's on here, but it won't let me.
Oh, okay. So yeah, so he is in the Zoom call, I wonder. Okay, so yeah, so there's been a button click that's trying to transfer Eric Marley from.
Laura?
Audience to participant.
Off that desk.
Oh, yes.
Do you mind? Thank you so much, just in case we forget.
So yeah, standing by for technology, hoping there's going to be a way to get him to join as our participant instead of just in the, oh, there you go. Look at that. Are you there, Eric?
Hi, everybody.
Oh, there we go. Amazing. Little patience worked for us today. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
So yeah, Laura started the process, but yeah, there's introduction, a little bit of relationship building to understand your efforts and, you know, the request that was provided.
Thank you very much for your time today. I appreciate it. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, it's, yes, we can hear you clearly. Yep.
You never know with these things, right? I don't know if I should sign language, hold up flashcards, you know, it's hard to know. Yes, I'm here representing the Owls. We call it a warrior society. I prepared maybe a, I'm trying to get through my information in about 10 minutes so that I can be present for questions and answers, things of that nature. Does that format sound good to everybody?
That's fine.
Perfect. I'll jump right in. There we go. Before I get into this, I guess, let me, let me give a little bit of background. I was approached separately by about a half dozen of my friends, most of them from, most of, all of them single moms with teenage young men at home. And about the vast majority of them from the central Oregon area, asking for me personally to help them find more tools to help them parent and guide their young men. Most of them teenage boys, 13 to about 17. And they, the mothers were concerned that they didn't have the resources to give them some of the direction they needed. Whereas they wanted men that they could trust to help guide them, give them additional tools to work with in their home. So the Owls were started because of that, out of that need and out of that desire. So I'd like to talk briefly about how the Owls helps communities and parents parent young men. Or ways that, now we, I've talked to some professionals, particularly Bill Moss, who's pretty well-known in this area. He's been a counselor for just under 50 years. And we went to him to discuss the possibility of some oversight from him for our program. And he mentioned that there were some real challenges in his practice. He's seen some very specific challenges for young, for young people. And our, of course, we're mostly, we're completely concerned with young men and helping them to progress. One of the challenges that he mentioned is that young men, young people in general are disconnected from nature. The Owls is set up to use nature as a way to help teach things related to cause and effect, respect in general, but in particular for the natural world. And also with that always comes a sense of gratitude for what is already in abundance in our lives if we stop and, and just acknowledge it. He mentioned as well, the need for rites of passage. The way that we've, the way that we're addressing that is through rites of passage that are similar to, but not exactly, similar to Native American rites of passage. My own background is heavy-duty Lakota spirituality, Sioux spirituality. I'm a seven-year sun dancer. I pour sweat lodges. I'm learning Lakota. I know the songs. At the same time, we don't want to pigeonhole young men into any kind of spirituality at all. All we're trying to do is give them rights of, access to rites of passage. So whether or not, all the young men that have attended the first couple of Owls things, the last time, the last big event we had, we had an actual Lakota sweat lodge. They actually went into a sweat lodge. There are some real advantages to sweat lodges for young men and men in general. And we've already exposed them to that. We will have opportunities for a wilderness quest, which would be similar to what you'd call a vision quest, but not exactly. A real vision quest is a four-day affair with no food or water. It's a whole other ballgame. What we would be doing is eventually as young men engage in the program and show that they're serious about their own personal growth, if they want to go on the hill, then we'll provide an opportunity with parental oversight to give them an opportunity to have that kind of a rite of passage. Declining standards, I think that it's, it's pretty apparent, I think, to most of us who are seeing what's going on in the world today, that there are, that whites, that, the standards of behavior have changed. And to, to address this with the Owls, we have developed, excuse me, a game called The Way of the Owl Warrior, which encourages anyone who participates, and that includes our, our male leaders in both the code and the motto. We, I have kind of, I've kind of ripped off Old School Scouting a little bit where they had a, a motto and a law. This is a code and a motto. The code is, an owl is consistent, I'm sorry, is honest, consistent, available, aware, respectful, humble, healthy, helpful, strong, and an owl has integrity. As part of the Way of the Owl Warrior game, that's stated every single day. And over time, that kind of gets into who you are. I've, I've been doing it myself for about seven months and it's changed the way I think about things. It's helped me to understand those, those principles better in my own life. I have young men who are just starting to get into it right now and they're taking it seriously. It's actually really encouraging. And it ties those standards into, into what masculinity is. It's not just alpha male stuff all the time that we, that we often associate with what we call toxic masculinity. It's really more about stepping into your own power in a way that, that requires some standards of behavior. Declining masculinity mentorship and healthy companionship. That's how we, in, in the Owls, we, we require our great horned owls to be engaged in the game and doing their very best to live the principles that I just talked about. Also, we have a warrior call every Monday night at eight o'clock. I wanted to do that like five in the morning on a Friday, but that was kind of outvoted and that's, that's okay. We can't do everything all at once. But at eight o'clock at night on, on Monday nights, the young men call in and we talk about some of these principles or how they're doing in the game or how they're doing in life or what they're seeing. Or I'll show some kind of a motivational kind of video. It's usually about a half hour long, but they're all right there and they go off to their lives. I was told, I was asked by Laura to prepare a little bit of a report about our last big event. We have about 10 of these scheduled. We want about 10 of these scheduled per year. We've had two of them now, we're a relatively new organization. For this one, we went to Wild Horse Lake. Are any of you familiar with Wild Horse Lake near the Steens? Have any of you been to the Steens Mountains?
Yes.
Yeah, I, it's.
And I have wild horses at my house, so.
There we go. Well, this is a. If you go to the top of Steens Mountain and look straight down about 1,200 feet, there's two little lakes down there. We hiked down to Wild Horse Lake and spent a couple of nights there and learned a lot. It was fantastic. We had a couple of challenges. One of them was as a direct result of COVID, we were short guys. We had great horned owls that were signed up, but one had a son exposed to COVID the day before we were supposed to go. I didn't, luckily I hadn't spoken to him, so he had to just beg off. And the other great horned owl, Jason, had some family stuff come up in an emergency situation that day. So I ended up taking five young men on that trip myself, which is not the program. I'll address that in a moment. Gear practicality is a real camping. It was a challenge, but it's also an opportunity. There were sleeping bags that weren't, it's pretty cold down there. They weren't quite sufficient. No one got seriously cold, but it was, we'd like to see something better. We also want the young men carrying their own gear when it comes to tents and cooking and things like that. The hike out. I'm still, I'm still tired from that thing. It was something else. We had some lessons that, in, in teamwork and leadership. In a nutshell, I had the two oldest guys take off and get to the summit well before anybody else. It provided a learning opportunity, but I was able to talk to those two, to those two guys and say, hey, you left the four young guys kind of to fend for themselves, a better, what's a better way to handle that? And we had a fantastic discussion and some lessons were learned. Wins. Some of the Owls have never seen that kind of country and I think it's really important in life in general, to put yourself in a situation where you can be in awe of something and instill a sense of wonder in our own lives. I think that's something that we often miss. And that country by itself, it's, there's plenty of wonder to be had. We're able to honor sacred springs and directions. Part of our program is the honoring of the feminine. We feel like that's a good thing for young men to be doing, whether it's their sister or their mom or Mother Earth or a spring, to honor that, just to pause and give, and to give thanks. We, I had them offering, offerings of tobacco to those springs. Not that there's anything in our culture that does that and not, not anything necessarily that they need to be doing all the time, other than the pause. It's just one way of doing it. And the greater thans, the directions, we talk about the four directions and things like that often in, in our presentations. Playing the wilderness is important. It was great to see those young men, some who had just barely met, just dropped the, dropped the barriers and, and they, they were fast friends. It was, it was amazing to watch. And then solitude, I required them to take 90 minutes and go sit alone somewhere. Now 90 minutes is nothing, but it's not nothing. It's not something that we do without cell phones. I've challenged most adults to do the same thing. I think it'd be interesting to find out what happens. I worry about the term warrior. A lot of, there was some concern, even among the, my friends that originally requested that I start this about that, that word. And I will admit that we do take some inspiration from guys like Jaco Willink, who's a Navy SEAL who's got a podcast. What I want to, I really want to emphasize that his war, the type of war that he fought and talks about a lot in his podcast, is not our war. Our war has a lot more to do with the war against laziness. It has a lot more to do with the war to stay with your intention, to stay with a goal. To if you, if you say you're going to do something, to follow through with it. The other thing that does, having this warrior term, it gives us a lot of teaching tools. There's a lot of power in metaphor. A lot of the best teachers in the history of the world have been heavy on metaphor. From Jesus to Gandhi to a lot of the, even a lot, particularly a lot of the Native American teachers have used metaphor for many, many, it just has a main way of getting a message across. And the Way of the Owl Warrior, the game that I mentioned, has a, has a component to it with that self-evaluation every single night. And if you don't, if you don't understand the, the war with, with our own self and laziness and just entropy as in general, you do have to play in the game.
Okay, Eric, let's, yeah, let's start winding it up. It's wonderful to hear who you are and what your application, you know, understand who you are behind the application that we had, had seen. And that was our goal today, was really just have a relationship, get to know the, the idea of what the program is out there. So you can say some last few things, but any thoughts or questions from the commissioners?
Eric, I have a question. Do you have, do you have sons yourself?
I do. I have one son. He's an Eagle Scout and a phenomenal father and husband. I'm so proud of him.
There you go.
That's wonderful.
Eric, I am, looking through your proposal from a couple of weeks or maybe at this point, it's a couple of months ago. You mentioned single parents as, you know, one of the key beneficiary groups of this program. And I'm just curious how, kind of, what your, what your process or what your system is to provide access to these opportunities? I mean, these sound like great opportunities to, to, you know, spend this intended, very intentional time, you know, in outdoors, out in nature with, you know, a group of, a group of young men who are trying to kind of develop their character. But it's like a, I don't, I don't have a, I didn't get a clear sense kind of how you are kind of identifying the people who could be beneficiaries of such a program and then, you know, outreach to them. And then, you know, there's, there are, there are a lot of single parents with, with teen boys in, in this community. So like, how do you, you know, what's your, what's your process is to, you know, to provide opportunity or access to, to everyone who would want or need this kind of service?
We have some marketing going on right now. We have a pretty lively Instagram page. I think we picked up about 400 followers in about a month and a half. And we've got a, a pretty good, a decent website as well. And we're continuing to put efforts toward, toward marketing. Honestly, this goes to, to young men right now, or those who identify as young men, which will be something we'll, we're still working on exactly how to work that out. But 13 to 18 are the, are the ages. And frankly, if, if there's someone who's interested and they hear about us, all they have to do is contact me. Then it's a matter of taking a look at the young man, interviewing him, making sure that we have the resources to support him. We don't have, at the moment, professional oversight. So I, with this grant money, we want to hire someone to take care of that and be at every Owl event, the big events in particular. So to answer your question, really it's, it's a marketing thing and that's it.
I mean, are you, are you, are you, like, you're, you're making a funding request. I mean, are, are you asking for dollars to provide tuition assistance to, to, to kids or families who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford to, to participate? Or, I mean.
Absolutely. That's, that's part of it. There's no way that anyone, right now, we, we probably charged a total of 1,500 bucks for this whole program to this point. We're trying to keep it as affordable as possible. It's going to have to increase, but no one will ever be turned away because of money. There's no way it'll happen. I've, this has been a labor of love for me. And will continue to be. So whatever we need to do, we'll, we'll do. We also expect, we have some good opportunities with the community, Pallygonia, REI, Big Five, and we have some ends with, with all those different corporations to help donate some of the gear that we need. Refund this whole thing so far out of pocket.
Great, thank you so much for joining us today. And the technology worked very well. We got to, got a feel for you now and a nice, a little bit of a relationship over Zoom at least. So thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Yeah. We'll leave it at that for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your passion.
Yes. And thank you Laura for helping coordinate those as a follow-up to our discussions from, yeah. I don't know how long ago that was either, about a month ago. Okay, at this time, item number six, American Rescue Plan Funding Update. Okay, at this time, item number six, American Rescue Plan Funding Update, and the topic of childcare.
Yes. Commissioners, thank you very much. Good afternoon. Greg Munn, County Treasurer and Chief Financial Officer, and with me, or this is our periodic ARPA update. It's maybe weekly now. Today's agenda is to present the information on the childcare demand and supply within the county. So it'll hopefully help the, help you with some of your decisions on this ARPA funding. And then after that, we'll come back and we'll go through the list like we normally do. And if there's any questions, we go through that or funding decisions that the board would like to make. We can do it at that time. So I'm going to turn this over to Brenda Camini here. And Karen Prowe is, should be on the line too at some point, but I'll turn it over to Brenda at this point.
Commissioners, thank you for having us today. Brenda Camini, I'm the Director for the Early Learning Hub of Central Oregon, so Crickdeshoots, Jefferson Counties, and the Confederated Tribes of Worm Springs. And one of the activities that we work on diligently and have had a lot of focus on lately is building childcare and preschool supply in Central Oregon. So what Greg asked for was a little bit of a high level about strategically what we've been doing and what might be helpful to you to consider as you look at funding applications.
So Brenda, one of the thoughts is for me, just to understand more. So my understanding, and so you can help with terminology too, as I say this, I'm probably getting, but I think there's home-based childcare. You know, a couple of kids at somebody's home during the day, it's just a good fit for a period of time for a mom not to be working with when they have young kids. And then I think there's an expanded version of that, maybe registered childcare, and then early learning center. And we're talking about doing investments. So just putting that in perspective and understanding, you know, if, if dollars are coming in, ARPA dollars, are we also just empowering that, that natural market? You know, I don't know if there was ever a time where we, we had it working as best as it could, but you know, whatever the good old days were is my point. Or, you know, what's the best place to be aiming for in the future? So just, just some words, you hear, hear me talk about it. And if there's any other thoughts?
Not yet.
Yeah, so thank you very much.
So the handout we were just given says November of 2019. Those are the latest numbers then, or that?
No, that's a comparison. So in the PowerPoint that was in your packet, there was a blank slide while we were working to pull the most recent numbers so that you would have a, a to-date comparison. The reason we included the 2019 was to give you a comparison pre-COVID.
So the top table is November 19 and the middle table is July 21. So it looks like, just the way the November's off to the top a little bit more, it looks like that's the date of this slide.
I know, I'm going like, okay, why are we getting that one? Okay, I get it now, thank you.
Yeah, and we, and we can walk through that a little bit to give you kind of a perspective. And certainly on that, there are the different types of care that Commissioner DeBonne was referring to. So you can look at the numbers by that type of care, also comparing part-time to full-time because I know you hear a lot about opportunities for parents to be able to work, being able to work full day and having to jump from provider to provider. So it will give you a sense of what we, what we have there. So just, just at a very high level, the question was whether we have a strategic plan around childcare in the region. And I can tell you that in the state, we have a strategic plan and we carry that on regionally here locally in understanding those numbers and really thinking strategically about what needs to be in place to make childcare viable and thriving in the region. So Raise Up Oregon is the state early learning system plan. And out of that, there's a reference to that, so you can see more of it online if you're interested. Out of that, there are roles for the Early Learning Hub and for Childcare Resources, which for us is seated within Neighbor Impact. And Karen, who is on the phone, represents them as the Director of Childcare Resource and Referral. And our roles are that we work together with community partners to figure out the best way to build childcare supply. Childcare Resource and Referral has a mandate to work on workforce. So really to build up what it takes in the workforce, to have quality early childhood programming, to work on pathways for education. And she's, Karen's going to talk a little bit more about that in just a minute.
Another, just a note, I was on one of the calls recently with the Annette Leba in Central Oregon. And remember, it was CCRNR, and I had to stop and ask what that, or maybe it was just text in the Zoom call. But, so Childcare Resource and Referral, but that's a type of, an office or a service done by region, correct?
It is. So there are hubs and childcare resource and referral agencies all the way across the state as part of the infrastructure to build childcare.
So are they two different things? An early learning hub is different than a CCRNR?
We are. So our-
And that's what we need to do, is just learn some of this terminology today.
Yeah, so our role as hubs are to convene partners across various sectors to figure out where we can leverage strengths that we have in the region, to work as we can to leverage resources at state and federal levels. And we're, we're going to show you some examples of how we've been doing that as a region and to work closely with our RNR partners. We also are mandated to do the coordinated enrollment, so how parents navigate into publicly funded preschool opportunities. So we have been working on that with families, so.
Great, thank you.
Helping them connect to the right programming. So I included our last Early Care and Education Sector Plan, and we do those on an every other year basis. We are slated to do an update the fall of this year. You're a little bit ahead of us, but I wanted you to have the old one to see the degree that we really dig into what parents are telling us that they want and need and how that factors into how we look to leverage and build childcare supply, what particular, specific populations need. So getting down to what kids who need a higher level of intensive service, so they may belong to an early intervention program and need to have a preschool experience and, and need some accommodation for that. And so that, that plan was to give you a sense of the deeper dive into what specific populations need and how we're using that to leverage public investment and expansion for childcare and preschool moving forward. Our sector plan stakeholder contributions, the way that this one came together, included a lot of community input. And in fact, much of it began locally here in Bend with conversations led by the Chamber and workforce partners around the needs around childcare in 2018. Katie, who's here as well today, Brooks from the Chamber, hosted the U.S. Chamber Roadshow in Central Oregon that allowed us to have a different level of conversation with business partners about what their needs were for workforce. And then we piloted a childcare accelerator position in 2019. And that position spent a lot of time out talking to employers about what their needs were, what space might be available, how they would like to participate in childcare on behalf of their employees. And then the sector plan kind of rolled that up along with parent survey and digging into the data for needs. We have Bend and Redmond task forces that meet. They look very different, as you can imagine. But Redmond has convened a cross-sector group that now are focusing a lot on regulatory coordination. So how the different licensing and regulatory folks interface with providers and really help clear that pathway to getting what needs to be done to stand up a business. Here in Bend, we tend to be more of a, a steering committee that really navigates how different resources are addressed. So we tend to do a little bit of divide and conquer, if you will. And out of that, you saw the proposal for Little Kids. So our higher ed partners stepping in to say, we can stand up not just temporary childcare, but a learning lab environment within that that can help feed our workforce needs as well. And then there's a list of stakeholders to give you a sense of who all is around the table and really digging into this issue. And then the piece that you have in front of you about what does childcare look like in Central Oregon? So we actually pulled out the Deschutes numbers and we did that very specifically by community so that you could see that. Let me tell you a little bit about the headings. Preschool is basically speaking to three and four-year-olds in a structured experience. Some of those are half-day programs, so three to four hours a day. Some are full day, which is typically up to six hours. That includes head start offerings, so publicly funded as well as private pay. Center care is providers that care for large groups of children in usually commercial settings. And so they have multiple providers onsite. And that depends on staffing ratios for the ages in care and the number of classroom spaces that is being stood up. Family care covers providers that primarily do service in their homes. And those can range from 10 children in registered care up to 16 in certified care. And they have one or two providers per group. So what you have in front of you is basically by location, on the left-hand side in each type of care column, part-time, so the P's part-time, the F's full-time, how many slots were available in 2019 when we did the last sector plan, and then a column for total, just to give you a sense. These numbers represented at the time about a half of what we projected the need for childcare to be. And this is up to school age, so that did not include school age, which we're going to look at this next go-round. So this is all younger children. So that, a little over 2,400 in Bend, represents one in three children having their childcare needs met. Our goal is to get to around two and three. So it's about half. That made us a childcare desert. You've heard that term, I'm sure, and that's what that number computes to.
So looking at this, the July numbers in Bend, preschool, 480 over 69. So can you explain that again? So it's 480 part-time slots?
That is, 480 part-time. So those are children that are going three to four hours a day. That doesn't mean that that meets their family's needs. They may be also accessing care for before or after that time with someone else in another setting. But that's how those programs are set up to provide care.
So that's the total number served today, 480?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then on the, so then at the center in the family with zero and 1,700 and zero and 609, that's just, there used to be 40 two years ago and 21 two years ago.
And that's because centers have pretty much all transitioned to full-time care. So, and the reason for that is in their licensing, if they're part-time, for them to meet their price point, that would mean they would have to find a corresponding child for part-time to really pay for the cost of that slot being open full-time. And the demand says there's enough people looking for full-time, they can fill their slots with full-time.
So this is a slide of total service today, that July 21 number?
Hot off the press. We can't see Karen, but if she can hear us and she has anything she wants to add. This is taken from the database that is maintained for providers at Childcare Resource and Referral.
And then that's about a third of the number, one-third of the need, is that what you said?
That is accommodating about one in three children's childcare needs.
And we want to get to two in three children's childcare needs. See, I'm just making sure I'm following you.
The, the total number, the total numbers in 2021 are significantly larger than they were in 2019. So we're still at, at one to three ratio.
Yeah, so, so the numbers look comparable. What this doesn't show you is the difference in census. And so I know that our census is going up. So our tracking about one in three is probably about the same at these numbers, even though it slightly went up. It also is a net number. And what I mean by that is that I've noted on here that we added 106 preschool promise slots, so publicly funded up to 200% of the federal poverty level. We also added 492 head start slots, and that's a mix of half-time and full-time. And in spite of that, we are a little bit more, but not significantly more. And we have not necessarily made a whole lot of headway toward reducing that childcare desert.
Preschool promise, can those slots fit in any of these categories or just a couple of them?
They are, they're accounted for under preschool. The head start and preschool slots are-
Okay, both of those are under head, the preschool category. Great. Thank you.
So does that help you with a sense of the numbers?
Yep.
Karen, is there anything you would add?
Sure. A couple of things. One is when you're looking at family childcare, that also includes small legally exempt providers who are in-home. And if they're caring for less than three children, they're going to show up in that number. Sometimes people choose to be legally exempt because they're just providing care for a family, a friend, but they're being paid through ERDC, which is Employment Related Daycare. And so we do have some numbers showing up in there for ERDC and legally exempt. And, gosh, there was one other thing. Well, okay, I'll move on because I can't remember. But one of the reasons that we didn't see as much of a decrease in our childcare supply as some other areas did in Oregon and around the country is because we did have those grants from Deschutes County, from the city of Bend. We were able to help providers along until the grant funding came from the Early Learning Division. Part of it too was the business coaching that was in part paid through money from Deschutes County. There were intensive supports provided weekly to our programs by Neighbor Impact, by Childcare Resources. And we had money that we were able to stand up new programs through Baby Promise, which is the younger child version of the preschool promise project. So a lot going on there. And then the city of Redmond has done a lot to change code, to change things so that providers can get into facilities easier, so has Bend. And Carolyn Egan and Ben Hemson at, in Bend have been amazing at helping us get prospective providers through the pipeline and troubleshoot to get programs stood up. So we've seen growth while we've seen that decrease like Brenda was talking about.
Great.
So strategically, we know that there are three things that we need to do to increase childcare supply in Deschutes County and Central Oregon broadly. We have to have a strong, ready workforce because without them, we cannot staff facilities and care. We need to align our regulatory and agency practice so that we don't have stumbling blocks along the way. And we need to stand up facilities. And so I'm going to turn it back over to Karen to talk about our workforce- And so I'm going to turn it back over to Karen to talk about workforce capacity building initiatives and how that plays in.
So what's, real quick, CCR, is that Child Care Resources?
Yep, Child Care Resources.
I was just trying to make sure I understand what that really is.
Yes.
So, Child Care Resources was stood up within Neighbor Impact back in the days when Neighbor Impact was still COCAN. And so the agency has been around for quite a while. They came up with the name Child Care Resources rather than calling it Child Care Resource and Referral, so we go by CCR rather than CCRNR, just to make it more confusing.
Yeah, I was still trying to make sure I understood it. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep. So we dropped one of the Rs with our name at our agency. Okay, so the thing that I had forgotten from before is when you're looking at those capacity numbers within Deschutes County, to keep in mind that that could be their potential licensed capacity, they might not be serving all of those children because they might not be able to find staff to actually staff those classrooms. So what we hear often is a program that could potentially stand up, you know, three full classrooms of children, but they're only actively enrolling for two of those classrooms because they don't have enough workforce for that third classroom. So that workforce is gone, that classroom is closed, they're still licensed for that number, but that is something, too, to keep in mind with these numbers. And that can fluctuate. If a program loses a staff member, they cannot legally operate with 30 children. Now they're, now they're down to 20 children. And so that's a huge risk factor in Central Oregon right now, to be able to reach our capacity is that workforce. So with building that workforce, we have partners in practice that we have been working on now since about 2013, that was originally funded through Early Learning Division money to start a pilot. And then when those pilot dollars were finished, the Early Learning Hub, Brenda's group picked up the tab on that and kept us going so that we would, would continue to fund that. It's basically a scholarship program for anyone working in the field of early care and education, but it also has an intensive wraparound service to ensure that all of our early educators who choose to return to college as non-traditional students have the support they need to be able to enroll and stay enrolled in those classes. So the, the main idea is to allow people to leave with their education and not have debt hanging over them as they work in a very low-paying field. And then also to totally avoid any off-ramps from education. So if they're frustrated one week and they just don't think they can do it while they're balancing business and family, we have a full-time person on our staff who helps them and works through that with them and helps connect them with services, helps to connect them with, we loan out laptops, we loan out whatever kind of technology is needed, we purchase textbooks, ensure that classes are available in English and Spanish. If a class cannot be offered in Spanish, we offer support for the Spanish-speaking students to get them through those courses as a cohort. And now, because of the success of this program, we have moved on to having solid funding from the Early Learning Division. So those dollars are going to be coming from the Student Success Act. And our region is really lucky to have that as a fully-funded program now. The business consultation and coaching is another idea that we came up with as we were rolling out Baby Promise. And the Early Learning Hub fully funded our pilot for that to make sure that we could get that off the ground. Most of the work that was done with the coaching was to sit down with our Baby Promise programs and help them figure out what is your full cost of care per child. A lot of times providers open a program, they look at how much parents can afford, what can the family afford, and that's what they charge. And so they end up subsidizing childcare by taking low pay themselves, by not having any benefits. Sometimes they are reaching into their own savings account to make it work. So what we did with Baby Promise is we had a business coach sit down and say, what is your actual cost per child? And then we were able to pay them through Baby Promise for that full cost of care per child. And that has also impacted their business practices for their other children. And then that coaching was able to move forward into our general provider population as well to help people really look at the business they're running. And that has paid off in a very big way with state and federal dollars that have been available. We had a lot more providers ready to show their financials than we had anticipated. And so a lot of people were able to access grant money who, you know, three years ago, two years ago, would not have been financially ready for that. They, they had no idea where they were at. So that's the, the business coaching piece. We keep that going now with Early Learning Division money because that is a fully-funded project now. And then we have the Certified Apprenticeship Program that is in works with East Cascade Works and multiple partners that Brenda has already talked to that are meeting regularly in Bend and Redmond. And then that project is with two other regions in Oregon. And so, and Nat Levy has been definitely instrumental in bringing that together, and Heather Ficht, and a lot of other partners I, I won't remember right now. But the idea really is to take advantage of the great skill and expertise at COCC and OSU, programs like Little Kits, and be able to roll out a Certified Apprenticeship Program where our early education workforce of the future can go and get fully trained with high-quality education while working in a program where their pay is 100% paid. And so really, that's going to be the way that we build our workforce in the future is to get programs to have high-quality placement sites for those apprentices and be able to provide that full education so that we can make sure that we're not losing workforce. We have a lot of early care and education workforce that gets burnt out and leaves because it is such a low-paying field. And right now, like I said, you know, if we had all of our wishes come true and we had all the facilities stood up that we needed to not be a childcare desert, we have a real workforce issue. And then at Neighbor Impact, at Child Care Resources, we are also working on a couple of projects to be able to bring in Aid One and Aid Two positions into the classrooms and fast-track to get the education that is needed for those positions so that we have that entry-level staff as well. So we're trying to hit it from, from all sides and eliminate that workforce issue for our providers.
So recognizing you're on a pretty tight timeline, I am going to go rather quickly through this next piece about the regulatory agency review. It was, the notes were pretty specific about the benefit of that. The only thing that I will add to that is that we saw an excellent example of how that works when all of the regulatory folks came together to tour the temporary Little Kits facility and talk about what it would take to get that space ready and/or to think about the new space in the future. And the benefit to that, that is ongoing for Little Kits, but also for other providers that these regulatory folks work with, is that they were talking among each other about what their expectations were for the provider. And so they could hear and see and process through in the same room together, the fact that some of them might have a different interpretation of what might need to happen. And so rather than having a provider hear it from one, go down the road, visit with the next person and be told something that might be actually conflicting and maybe incur expense, they were all in the same room to have that conversation and come to agreement about steps that could and should be taken. And so we see that as a real promising practice, both in terms of time-saving clarity and reducing expense for providers and getting into facilities. We've talked a little bit about how we've maximized other relief funds. And so hearing, hearing a little bit about how we're doing that, we, we really are bringing as many resources as we can into our communities in Central Oregon. So I think that we are actually pretty good about piloting and bringing in resources. And so we will continue to do that, but we want you to have full confidence that we aren't just coming to you for money and expecting all out of one place. We really are actively seeking access to ongoing funding and how that happens. In the facilities capacity building initiatives, we have shared some models that we have been working on. You have already heard about Little Kits. And I know that you have in front of you an expanded proposal for the outlying areas that Kelly so generously put together and reviewed with many of us while that was being brought forward. Some considerations that I would offer up is that it's really important, I think, to consider that it's a high-quality facility that you are investing in. That infrastructure investment could not be maximized if it was a program that didn't embrace that high quality and wasn't actively working toward that. It limits their ability to access public funding, to diversify their funding portfolio. And it also could limit their ability to leverage workforce because, for instance, the, well, the internship programs through the college, they are looking for a high-quality center that will be reflective of the curriculum they're teaching. But it's also required for the Certified Apprenticeship Program that it be a high-quality program, meaning that it's rated in the Spark Rating System, which is our Quality Improvement Rating System for the state, and that individuals within that program are accessing the Oregon Registry through Portland State University are actively working on their education in early care and education. And so...
So, yeah, I'm trying to understand the high-quality program. I mean, is that relative to a low-quality program? I mean, yes, I'm just trying to understand that still. And you just said there, there's some specific things, but what, what would a not-high-quality program be?
Well, there, there are programs operating within the region that are not actively pursuing quality rating through licensure. So they haven't made a commitment to quality and started through that step system. And so from my perspective, it would be important to understand whether programs that we're being invested in were embracing that and moving on that quality rating because it limits them and what the program can do, and frankly, their sustainability down the road.
Is that for all types of providers that can be going down that path?
Mm-hmm.
So, so the, a key piece of quality assurance is licensure?
It, it is. It is licensure. It's pursuing education, yeah, for their employees.
Thank you.
Karen, would you add to that? I feel like you're like in the...
I know, I'm, I'm so sorry I wasn't able to be there in person today, doggone COVID. So with the quality rating improvement system that rolled out in Oregon in, I think it was 2013, there's been a lot of reflection on how that, going through that step of increasing your quality and documenting your quality actually does or doesn't represent quality. And so I understand that, that quality is kind of this weird thing out there, that nobody really knows what that is. And they are in the process of changing it at the state to be less of a rating system and more of a reflective system and a recognition system where providers can go through and they can document their indicators of quality. So, you know, do they have written procedures and protocols for their family? Are they using some sort of a curriculum to guide their daily practices? What kind of supervision is in place? How do they honor the needs for children to grow and develop? Do they do some sort of a screening process for children who could perhaps have high needs that need to be addressed? You know, just how active are they in ensuring that a child is in a program where they can thrive? And so I don't know if that helps with the quality piece, but it's definitely something where if we work with a program who has that mindset and is interested in continuously improving their quality, we see more of a likelihood that they will stay in the field and not get burnt out and have families and children who are thriving. And when we work with programs that are like, no, I've got this. You know, I, I don't really want you coming in to my program and I'm not interested in feedback. And, you know, they sort of shut the door. We see more likelihood that those programs have frustrated families and they usually do not stay in the profession as long.
And Karen, if they were considering funding a program, how would they know if they were working on their quality?
That information is available through Western Oregon, Oregon University, through TRI, the Research Institute, and we can send you reports. They have a monthly and quarterly report that they issue. So our staff has been tasked with doing that quality improvement work and supporting those programs on that quality improvement journey and documenting within their portfolio. So we have access to the, that information, and it is public information, so it's something that we can easily share.
Well, it sounds like there's, yeah, a lot of good logic and, you know, support in that, that whole effort. It's just, as I say, when you say a high-quality program, you think, oh, you mean relative to, and you just accidentally filled it in, you know, the low-quality program.
So there's something to be said for the fact that as we've lived in a childcare desert, that has happened because, you know, I'll just go with that term and say low-quality care, but you have care that you really wouldn't want to see it exist when we're in a childcare desert because families need childcare. And some of us would say, no, families need and deserve high-quality childcare, but there just isn't enough of it out there. And so then you have other things pop out that aren't really desirable, but it's just, you know, that, that demand is going to bring it to the surface. And so the best way we can get rid of that childcare that isn't desired in our community is to increase high quality.
But when people are desperate, I, I think it makes a huge, it makes a difference. If you are desperate and you really do need to work, you know, we've had an employee last week that couldn't come in one day because she couldn't find childcare for her two kids. But what about that program? Was it Baby Promise? It was pre-COVID. I remember it was being discussed, the state was going to be promoting it, et cetera, et cetera. When did that actually, when was it implemented and what are its numbers now? What kind of a difference is that program making?
So Baby Promise rolled out during COVID. We had a very small, slow start because of that, but now we're in the process of implementing our very last contract with our very last site. And with that, we will have 87 children being served in Central Oregon through Baby Promise. We had started with a goal of 109 children, but because our cost per child...
So you're, you're only up to 87?
Yes. And so our cost per child was higher than anticipated. The original 109 slots was based on what the state thought we could pay per child and actually get to full cost per child. So our total number served is lower, but we are paying the full cost of care on every child. And so the impact that has had is we are working with about 15 programs, and these dollars go into the provider's pocket at the beginning of the month before the child attends. They have guaranteed income. It's income at the cost per child that, rather than what a cost they came up with that they thought the family could potentially pay. And so they're getting more money into their programs. They've been able to increase pay to their staff. They've been able to, with a lot of family childcare providers who were paying themselves $6 or $7 an hour, they've actually been able to increase their own salary to a livable salary. The quality improvement has been amazing because we have an infant toddler specialist going into programs to actually work with them to review their practices and look at ways to implement quality improvement strategies. That project also came with what are called enhancement dollars. And so we've been able to... And so we've been able to go into programs, look at the environment, and then actually purchase items the program needs to become a safer program, to become a better place for children to have a successful day. So it's just been an amazing project and we really look forward to that expanding in our area. It's been very successful.
So if there's 87, how many of those are in Deschutes County? And what is your expansion looking like? You know, are you talking to get up to the 20 more to get up to the 109 you originally thought? And where are those dollars going to come from to pay for that?
Okay, so with programs in Deschutes County, just off the top of my head, I think 57 are in Deschutes County. So we have more in Redmond, Lapine, Sun River, actually, than we do in Bend. Our final contract is with a program in Bend, and so we're going to see a little bit more expansion there. The dollars, we hope, will come from the Early Learning Division. We hope those dollars will come out as preschool promise expands in our region, hopefully in January. We hope that preschool promise will follow. We have no guarantee of expansion dollars at this point. Uh-huh. The gift of Baby Promise really is that it's a full, fully wrapped around program where the family pays nothing. They have no copay. They don't pay for formula. They don't pay for diapers. It's nothing out of pocket.
So as you look at opportunities that are in front of you, since I'm trying to get you there, we had forwarded with that piece that Kelly promoted for us, the little kits expansion to leverage both childcare capacity and workforce in Redmond. So that would give the similar capacity in the north end of the county to serve workforce and expand workforce in that early learning as well as increase childcare capacity. And you can see the numbers, so you know the need is there. Another Redmond expansion that I didn't have your packet in front of me when I put this together, so I didn't realize you already had necessarily proposals in front of you that you were considering today, but Mountain Star Relief Nursery has an opportunity to expand to preschool in Redmond. And so that's a very, a very doable. They're a high-quality program. They're well-established. They're providing their traditional Mountain Star Relief Nursery program for zero to two. It would build continuity to add a preschool opportunity for families that are experiencing high stressors. And so that's a known partner and a very expandable project. In Sisters, we have been working with Parks and Rec and the school district. Sister School District is managing a preschool promise classroom, or two preschool promise classrooms for 18 children this year. Parks and Rec is very interested in looking at co-op models and some maybe more innovative opportunities, and they have a parent group that's willing to work on that. So Parks and Rec has the ability and the capacity to hire staff and has managed preschool opportunities before. And then in Lapine, Sun River, we had spoken that proposal about a potential partnership down there. Mountain Star Relief Nursery, again, in doing their latest strategic planning, they have been providing relief nursery services in Lapine on a, on a call-in basis and meet families where they are, having a facility that they would stand at preschool opportunities in first, would give them the infrastructure to leverage the state funds for the programmatic side to have ongoing support in Lapine, and they know that the demand is there. They just haven't been able to bring the pieces together. And I know that Kelly and Katie are here to answer anything that you might want to know about that proposal that maybe I can't speak to.
So one of the things, the big picture items is this, when it comes to childcare, is this a, an industry, a fee-for-service type service in our community, or is it a subsidized thing? So, you know, I'm just trying to understand.
It's both.
Yeah.
It's both. You have a portion of your population that the income that they're making, they can't pay for housing and childcare without some subsidy assistance. And the good news is the state's expanding their public offerings, and they're expanding those public offerings at a rate that helps the business model for a facility. And that's part of my point to working with providers that are high-quality. They have to be in that position and be committed to working on quality, continuous education, reflection, high-quality curriculum to be able to make application for the public subsidy fund. So if they want to diversify their financial portfolio, they need to position themselves in a place to do that. And you have a population that's looking for capacity that have the means to pay. And there just isn't enough supply.
Well, and that, yeah, that kind of can grow on itself. You know, when we talk about how much money can we get from the state, that's always going to be a need to fund. But if we build a system that can grow naturally in our, you know, vibrant economy, then we're getting somewhere.
One of the things that I think is really promising to me is we had looked on here at a microcenter model, which basically would be an infrastructure support for a provider to support several small places with their whole administrative structure and overhead versus having to have that for each little kind of component. And we didn't see that come to fruition because, you know, when COVID started taking off, it's like they were struggling to keep businesses, not, not expand or take on a new model. And so the timing was not right. But we have a couple of providers in the region that are actively standing up, high-quality programs. They are leveraging the public funding and they are expanding to serve several different facilities. So an example of a provider in Redmond that's taking on a second site in Redmond recently has taken on purchasing a program that was closing in Creek County and is actively looking for a site in Bend. And so with that infrastructure and being somebody that's been in the business a long time, that's really promising to me to see that happen because that's part of how you're going to grow the infrastructure for programming. It's not little program by itself, by little program necessarily. It's building that overall capacity. And she'll be able to provide placements for the certified apprenticeship program, similar to what we want to see happen with little kits. So I think connecting all of those dots is how we, we grow.
Wonderful. Any thoughts or questions?
I've taken it Greg's time. I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
Great job.
And I have some more questions.
I know.
So we have these American Rescue Plan dollars. These are, you know, all of the advice that we're getting is to think of these as one-time funds. So, you know, in my mind, you know, originally that meant, oh, well, if we have these, if we have these three regional focus areas, you know, workforce, lining regulatory agency practice and facilities, you know, the simple, the simple connection would be, oh, well, facilities, those are typically one-time costs. But I am curious whether you see ways that you can make one-time investments in these other, in these other arenas, the workforce or the regulatory agency practice, that might be more impactful than making capital investments?
I don't know that I would ever use the word more impactful to, to describe that, but certainly we are working to leverage ARPA dollars across several different jurisdictions to meet those buckets. So for instance, the conversation with the city of Bend about how we offset system development and fee structures and, and if it can come to happen that that is a bucket of money that they keep to help fund that, it's almost a win-win that it goes back into their infrastructure as well, but really provides an offset to the cost for providers to get up and going. So that's one example. We are leveraging the ARPA monies for the planning and pilot work for the certified apprenticeship program, and that's coming out of ARPA funds that are at the Early Learning Division level. And so I guess, I guess what we want to tell you is we are leveraging all those together and we hope that where you can, that you are making investments that are in consideration or helping to build the whole infrastructure. And so that's the reference to quality and what that means to be able to leverage other funding for ongoing operations and build workforce. Does that help?
It does. So with that, with that, that understanding of the whole system and all of the, all of the, you know, it's an ecosystem of things that you have to build, you know, all at once. Do you have any, do you have any recommendations for us on these, you know, these are, you know, this is a specific pot of ARPA funding, you know, and again, one of the key things that's been emphasized to us is that these are one, you know, use these as one-time investments. Do you have, do you have recommendations for us on, on how to, how to spend these monies?
I totally support the proposal that was brought forward by Kelly. I mean, that wasn't without thought and without a lot of conversation. There are some pieces that aren't fully fleshed out. The new opportunity in Lapine to build infrastructure with Mountain Star came to us after that was submitted to you in this process. And Sisters obviously has some work to go. But if you take a look at the raw numbers and, and what the needs are and, and the fact that, for instance, in Sisters, we know that their childcare needs are only going to grow with their business development over there, having some work around how we get infrastructure put in place over the next several months to be able to grow that and work in partnership over there to grow that capacity. I, I think that it's key and I think that knowing your values around supporting countywide, how everybody is brought together in building capacity, I think that that is a doable, a doable project, series of projects almost, and fits the needs that are articulated in the needs survey.
I have a question, since I used to have three kids that I had to do all these wonderful things with. If you have, okay, it says a preschool, part-time in Bend, 480 people currently, and part-time is three to four hours. Are those 480 people actually working somewhere part-time when they only have childcare for three to four hours? I mean, are they really, I mean, because I know you have to drop your kids off and then you have to be there at a certain time to pick them up. And are they, are they part of our part-time workforce? I mean, are we honestly, and then if you look at it, and these are young kids, these are only, what, three to five-year-olds. Only 69 of those in Bend in preschool were full-time, which is only five to six hours. And it used to be, I know people now that are, I mean, it would be horrible, but they're working 12-hour days because we are so short of a workforce. Are most of these people dropping off children, are they working?
So what I can tell you is that Head Start families may have one person in the household working, but likely don't have two. And part of that follows that piece about they couldn't be at 100% of the federal poverty level if people were all working. So that system is built there. And one of the things I would say about the numbers as I'm looking at them, and I would defer to Karen, but I believe that not all of the Head Start expansion are reflected in the preschool numbers, likely because right now they are not open.
Head Start is still not open?
Well, they will be in the fall, but they do not have summer programming, so pulling the numbers for July. Karen, is that an accurate guess?
So the numbers for Head Start are represented there, and the reason that it's broken out into part-time and full-time is that Neighbor Impact Head Start has morning and afternoon part-time, and they also have what they call a duration classroom that runs six hours. And so they're providing both services, and so we were trying to capture that, the difference between the very part-time and the duration classroom.
But your preschool numbers on this chart are not all Head Start, though, are they?
No.
No. There's other programs that are included in there. But I just was wondering, you know, because we do talk about a childcare desert and we talk about helping our workforce, and I'm wondering, you know, what can, what can we do to really help our workforce?
Well, what we are hearing from families that are applying for preschool promise is many of them, if they're trying to adjust to a work schedule, they are looking beyond that six hours at looking for and having a preference for programs that have opportunity for subsidized care before and after to really span their workday. And I think that's one of the tenants, Karen, neither Karen or I have talked about it, but I think that's one of the tenants that we have tried to also be strategic about is help programs bill continuity, both within the day so that they're accommodating workday, but also over time. So where there are programs with baby promise, we are also advocating that they stand up services for preschool promise. They can stay with a family over time and handle siblings of different ages when they fall in different age groups, because that's the other challenge for families is when programs are so siloed by age to be served, then it runs parents all over the place and has to coordinate all those schedules and, and it just isn't good for developing relationships for families and having consistency for children. So, so we are strategically working on that.
Thank you.
So, thank you for breaking these numbers down by, by city or, you know, by community or by region. And I know I could go back and do this later on on my own, but, you know, basically I want to compare kind of how big is the population of Bend compared to how many childcare slots there are. Just looking at these numbers or, and knowing what you do, are there, are there parts of the county where you think that we are, we have a greater shortage than others?
I would really want to step back and look at the numbers. What I can tell you is an easy way to compare that is in the Early Care and Education Sector Plan that was in there, the full data page, which is about page 14 or 15 in that document, it gives you a broader span of the numbers and it compares it to population as well as a breakout by income. So up to 200% of the federal poverty level, 200 and below, and then all children that fall in that age group. And so that will give you a better sense to those numbers. And I didn't review it with that lens before I came here, but, but it would give you that sense.
You said page 14?
I think 14 or 15 in the Early Care and Education Sector Plan. It has these, these numbers from the top, but it has way more data than that. I just wanted to give you the supply summary today.
Yeah. Kind of another, another sort of proportions-type question. You run through preschool, center, and family settings and, you know, I I can imagine like some, some, we have all three. It seems like all three have certain advantages and disadvantages or, and maybe serve different populations, and so do you have any, you know, off the top of your head insights on, well, we, we have, yeah, well, we need more of a certain type more than others? Or is it just, we need all of these, and, you know, adding, adding a space anywhere is a good thing?
I, I think in general, we need all. I think that more families are telling you that they are looking for that continuity of care that we're striving to give them, so they want relationships with their providers. We heard that even more strongly during the pandemic, or if they had to leave a provider that they had a strong relationship with, what that meant to them as a family system. I think that certainly we do not have any providers that I know of in the region, and Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that non-traditional hours, so weekend, overnight care, we do not have providers that are able to provide that, with the exception probably of some family-based providers that do it out of the goodness of their heart for families. I myself had my kids with a family provider and had her from the time they were babies all the way up into school age, and so because of that relationship, if I had to be gone overnight for work and didn't have another option, she kept my kids because that was our relationship. So, but we do not have advertised hours for people to sign up for, for non, more non-traditional hours, let alone full workday, enough capacity for that.
And you mentioned continuity, you know, the, the key concern being continuity of care. Are there ways that each of these, these three different types, you know, are, are better or worse at providing continuity of care? Or have, or have greater challenges or greater opportunities?
Well, depending on the size of the center, obviously, they, they can build capacity to have rooms that specialize in the different ages and have the ability for a child to stay within that facility and move to the appropriate room developmentally. And so that's another piece that Little Kits has been very thoughtful and intentional about, as are many of our centers that are working on, working on quality care. Preschools tend to be very centered about around three and four-year-olds, and so by definition, that doesn't have the same continuity of care. But where we can build in preschool programming in a facility, so as a funding source with that public funding, in a center or within a family structure that can take younger and keep them through until school age, there just is a big benefit for families and for the child.
Thank you.
I cannot make your decisions for you. If, if you're angling there, are you going to help them with recommendations?
Well, we're not, we're not asking you to make the decisions. We're just trying to get all the perspectives that we can.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think, I think the short, the, the short answer, though, that you hit the nail on the head is we, we just plain are very short, and we want high quality. We want to be able to build the infrastructure that gives continuity of care, that provides what families need in terms of the duration of care during the day, during the week. And when we do that, then kids are in better shape and families have less stress, and they're better workers, and kids arrive ready for school. And so we want all of that.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
There you go.
So I have another question then, because this chart, when it says July 2021, it says this includes 106 preschool promise. Is it actually 106? Is that one completely funded?
We actually, it's 106 in Deschutes County. We actually had 162 slots across the region that were preschool promise, and we really are trying to help the early learning division understand specifically what our needs are geographically and how we expand, because there are expansion slots available. We're struggling to fill our Head Start slots and trying to understand more about whether that's not having as many people at 100% of the federal, federal poverty level or less that actually meets that eligibility, whether some of that is hesitancy about enrollment right now with COVID, or what that looks like. But I would suspect that we, as a region, would not look to add many more, if any, Head Start slots in this next expansion round. I think it's the next layer of eligibility for public funding that we would advocate for more heavily.
One last question. So we're, we are trying to decide, you know, under the American Rescue Plan, the county is getting $38 million. We are trying to decide kind of what, what slice of that or what, what portion of that we are going to try to, to direct towards childcare investments. My, my sense is that, you know, we need to, we need to spend, you know, broadly, you know, not just from this, this pot, but broadly, you have tens of millions of dollars on, on this, you know, to, to make a dent in that, in that childcare desert. I mean, do you have any, do you have any kind of a sense of, of what, what magnitude of investment is significant or, you know, you know, actually helps us, you know, have an impact?
Yeah, I don't remember the actual number that we landed on for the Little Kits piece, and I don't have it sitting here on the table in front of me. When we looked at overall, we did some thinking about investment across the region. Can you help me with that?
It was $2 million for their... Sorry, I'm Kelly Sparks with OSU Cascades. So it was $2 million for the Bend investment, and that is 170,000 was set aside of that overall $2 million, a million from the state of Oregon's investment, and a million from Deschutes County's investment. 170,000 to maybe go back to Commissioner Chang, a question you asked earlier, was for operational startup costs. And part of that is to create a modular design based on the state of Oregon's early learning divisions requirements for physical space environment, to put out an RFP and work with a modular designer in the state of Oregon, so that we have a replicable modular structure that can be put on any site, anywhere in our county, as well as potentially across the Oregon, state of Oregon, leveraging Oregon State contracting requirements, so that a public agency can purchase it at a pre-negotiated price to bring down the overall cost of future development of those sites. So that's a portion of that, and then to work with a design team to get us to that. The other part of it is workforce development, and none of these funds will be going towards that workforce development. They'll be coming from alternative funds to leverage against this, to really build that future workforce. That is a place where more investment could be made here in the county. The biggest issue we have is hiring staff. We recently hired our director for Little Kits to get us up and going, who will be starting to running our secondary pilot. We have three lead teacher positions we've posted, fully benefited, living wage, public employees, benefits union, three applicants. Two are qualified, one is not. So we have to build our workforce from within, and so when we look towards leveraging that and putting that forward, investment in workforce development is as important as investment in the facilities in order to build, whether it's a home-based environment, whether it's a center-based environment, whether it's registered or licensed, whichever version of high quality we're going for, we have to build our workforce here in central Oregon to keep them in central Oregon and get them into, into living wages. So the second half of the investment was to be able to replicate that large modular structure, to be able to add a second facility at 1.3 million. That could be in Redmond. Frankly, there's just as much as demand. We could have three in the region, another in Bend. COCC has offered additional lands in order which to build that. They've taken that to their Board of Trustees. They've started those early conversations. Another in Redmond, that's where a large center model makes sense for our region, and then two additional models to leverage potentially smaller other environments, either Morning Star through Sisters, Parks and Rec, what Brenda Comini has been sharing with us, and those in the $500,000 range. What I would say is we would really want to model those very specific opportunities financially to say, what investment do we need to make in the physical or the built environment to move that forward? And then what investment do we want to put into operational startup costs in order to build the workforce at a living wage, so that we don't just get them hired the first time that we retain them now for that continuity of care over the next five years?
Thank you.
All set? Thank you so much. Lots of great information. It's very valuable to see the, you know, just kind of the umbrella view of this, because this is exactly where we were at. We knew we were making investment. We were hoping that it was connecting with, you know, the big picture. So, thank you.
It is, it is. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much for prepping that for us. Do we want to take anything else, go anywhere with this today, or was there any other?
So that's, you have an opportunity to do that now. We can also go through other items in the list, and if there's anything that jumps out that you want to move forward with. We have two more presentations scheduled. We have one on the 23rd and one on the 25th with the Food Warehouse, Neighbor Impact, and a follow-up to the Cleveland Commons Project, where we'll have the Director of Housing Works here as well, and Scott Cooper from Neighbor Impact.
Great. I mean, I'd just say that it, it seems like childcare proposals, like, in some ways, it seems like childcare proposals are just really starting to roll in. There's been a number in the last couple of weeks. So I will, you know, it's...
Now it's time to go look at them again, because we're...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I would, I mean, I would, I would love to, I would love to plan a time to, to review more applications and think about making allocations of funding soon, but I'm not sure when the right time to ask for that is, is going to be. Like, I, I definitely don't feel like, we just got a lot of great information, and it doesn't feel like right now is the right time to, to, to look at applicant, I mean, unless...
I'm not prepped for it right now.
Well, and remember, you've already set aside $2 million as a placeholder for childcare, so it's already sitting there in a, in a pre-approved status.
How much was that, Greg?
$2 million.
Two? Okay. Yeah, I think we need to really review.
We had $3 million originally and moved $1 million to the Little Kits project.
So I think we need to review because we have gotten a lot of applications. And, you know, if we need childcare for a workforce, I think we have to really, you have to consider that.
100% agree.
Yeah, you know, all I know is if I could have my little child in somewhere for three hours, that meant it would take me like a half an hour to get back, drop them off. That would be like, I would be at the office for like an hour probably, or an hour and a half, so I know, and yet, you know...
Pour a cup of coffee, turn on your computer, and then it's about time to go.
Oh, my gosh, gotta go pick you up. I've taken my child to the office before in tax season. That was a big mistake. They asked me to leave, I think at 2:00. That was, yeah, yeah, tape was all over the floor. It was a, it was a big nightmare.
I, I do know some families in Bend who, you know, either the, the mom or the dad is a, is a remote worker who has a certain amount of flexibility. So, you know, having four to six hours to, to, you know, go off and, and put into work, and then cranking out a few more hours at night after your kid's asleep, that's kind of the, that, that's the way they, that they get a 40-hour work week done. So even the part-time is, is, you know, for that kind of a, a family setup could be useful, but...
Oh, I know. Oh, definitely. I know, I know it's, you have to be self-flexible. That's number one thing. But I don't think today is the day we can make decisions.
Yeah, so, yeah, this was just presentation today. Thank you so much, everyone. It's great. Thanks for joining us in the room, but it's just great to see how it all connects together. And as I say, learning some terminology is part of the process also.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So at this time, other items. As you saw, I provided a copy of OSU, OHSU COVID forecast provided this morning. So Friday afternoon, as I was leaving, it was a request to county commission chairs again to join the governor, so it was first thing this morning at 8:30. And there's about 50 people on the call total, so that was, you know, probably commissioner from each county plus a few other folks in there. And there were the updates. So this, Peter Graven, Dr. Graven had provided this, you know, hospitalized patients, and then the, the numbers of hospital and hospital capacity. So as you can see, numbers are just racing at this point up, real high, steep slope here, and then there's little, I think, yeah, predictive model census forecast is the second to last, last two pages, which shows that, you know, this is what the governor's working with, is what was shared, that this spike could really double what activity we've seen in the past.
Yeah, this, this, this modeled, modeled scenario that runs us all the way into October before, you know, we, we get much relief is frightening.
Yes. You look at our landmass, Region 7, and I was, our numbers actually on page four, we're not at the, we're not at the top of the list, fortunately for Region 7, but our numbers today, we were the fourth worst in the state. I think we're at 355. So that's 118 a day. Yes. So I will say it, please, if you're going to be out, you need to wear a better mask than the surgical masks. So, anyway, if that's what they're giving out in the Capitol for everybody, the KN-95, then maybe that should be good for Deschutes County. And I've talked to a lot of people, and they all have them, but they have them in their bathroom. And I'm like, if you have those masks in your bathroom, could you please bring them out? I mean, truly, I've had people tell me that all weekend, so, anyway.
Yeah, well, so vaccines, you know, I've always been advocate for vaccines, and, you know, wearing a mask, you know, wearing a mask is fine going into the store in these dense, denser areas, all the commercial activity. I want to thank folks that are working on the front lines. They've been doing it the whole time, you know, grocery stores and, you know, just the direct connections with folks that are walking in the front door of any business.
And someone made a comment that they think that maybe we should flip the $300 and give it to those people that have been working every week, because they have been working, truly working. When you're, when you're putting in 12-hour days for your company, that is way beyond. And I, you know, I know that some of our employees work four-day weeks for the county, but it definitely, you know, it takes its toll. So, yes, perhaps the governor could think about that. Let's flip the $300 to those that are working, and then just, that would really help the workforce.
And the message from this morning is truly the healthcare system around the whole state of Oregon, just the workers, the number of workers available, being able to move people through the, the system, getting patients that are ready for discharge, that can't go home yet, to a longer care facility which doesn't have capacity, and it's a function of staffing there also. So just the whole system is slowing down because of the capacity of staff also. Okay, yeah, so that's an update from a meeting this morning. Any, any other item? Anything else? Okay, we do have two executive sessions for today. Let's take a five-minute break before...